I'd like to call to order the December 21st, 2020 Commission Meeting. Welcome all of our guests here tonight and honorees. At this time, I'll call on Commissioner Glover for our prayer and pledge.
Good evening. We have two of our cross-country team members here. We're honoring Aiden Britt today, tonight, for his accomplishments. And the team members are here. Judah Bender is going to be doing our prayer, and my son Bryson Glover will be doing the pledge.
Please rise.
Bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for waking us all up this morning. Thank you for bringing us here safely, and I pray that you would lead us home safely. Lord, Aiden has done such a great job over these past four years, and I just pray that you would protect him on his travels and in his endeavors. And Lord, I would just pray that you continue to bless us, lead us, and guide us just a little while longer, and forgive us all of our sins. And in Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Please turn toward the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. Mr. Glover? You will now please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Ash slash Santa, Commissioner McFarland, and that would be it. And Aaron Wilson. See if you can help Commissioner Costley to get online. He's trying to get online at this point. Please record. Twenty-four and one at the present, and if Commissioner Costley gets on, we'll have a full house tonight. Now, he's got there, absent, but let's try again. We good to go? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, six remote. Six on remote. Okay, at this time, we'll go with the report from the Steering Committee. Commissioner Patton.
The Steering Committee met on Thursday, December the 10th, 2020, in the County Commission Room. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received as filed.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have been joined now by Commissioner Costley, so we have a full house. Adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Patton.
May I adopt the agenda?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda? There's none in the packet?
No.
At this time, we'll have special recognition, and we'll start with Commissioner Breeze. If you can speak into the mic as much as possible, then maybe my folks at home video can hear. He is.
If you could come join us, the President of Val State is here this evening. If you can come join me at the podium. This is an honorary resolution for Val State University. It's celebrating 50 years of education for Middle Tennessee. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, recognizing Val State Community College as celebrating their 50th anniversary. Whereas Tennessee higher education in 1969 authorized the establishment of Volunteer State Community College, and whereas ground was broken in November of 1970 in Gallatin, Tennessee, for the campus of Volunteer State Community College, and whereas the first students of Volunteer State Community College began taking classes in the fall of 1971, and whereas Volunteer State Community College provides education opportunities to citizens of 11 counties in North Middle Tennessee, including Wilson County, and whereas more than 30,000 people have obtained degrees or certificates from Volunteer State Community College, including 3,227 citizens from Wilson County, and whereas Volunteer State offers dual enrollment and dual credit opportunities to high school students of Wilson County, whereas Volunteer State Community College is a vital partner in the economic and workforce development efforts of Wilson County, whereas Volunteer State Community College contributes $102 million each year to the economy of the region and is responsible for the creation of 18,958 jobs over the last five years, and whereas Volunteer State Community College has invited the region to celebrate the occasion of its 50th anniversary and to participate in activities planned to commemorate the auspicious date. Now therefore, be it resolved that Wilson County does hereby congratulate Volunteer State Community College on its 50th anniversary and expresses its best wishes and hopes for the college's continued success, and be it further resolved that Wilson County does commend Volunteer State Community College for the 50-year-long tradition of providing a quality education to the citizens of Wilson County and for fostering productive and vital partnerships with the region, state, and nation. Congratulations. Thank you so much for everything you do for the community.
Please, please help me welcome Dr. Jerry Faulkner, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Hutto. Thank you, Commissioners, for this acknowledgement of Val State. We are so proud to have been part of this community for 50 years and to have served North Middle Tennessee. As was read in the resolution, we kind of had a hard time deciding when our anniversary was. Was it '69, '70, or '71? So we just decided we'd celebrate for about three years. So that's what we're doing. Thank you again for letting me be here. Let me recognize my wife, Wanda, the First Lady of Val State. She's also here with us tonight. You know, we've awarded, as was said, over 30,000 degrees and certificates in our 50 years of existence. That's 30,000 lives that have been changed. That's 30,000 families that have been changed, and was again read, over 3,200 of those were citizens of Wilson County. This fall, we have over 1,000 citizens of Wilson County that are enrolled at Volunteer State Community College, and this year, Wilson County surpassed Davidson to be our second-largest county in terms of where our students come from. So we're very proud to be part of you here. We're very proud that of those 1,000 people that are enrolled, over 500 of them are dual enrollment students in our partnership with the Wilson County Schools, with Dr. Donna Wright. We appreciate her so much and the partnership that we have there as well. So thank you again for this opportunity and for this honor. We look forward to continuing to serve. Oh, forgot to say, as many of you know, we by gift and by purchase now own 10 acres of land near Mount Juliet, and we hope in the very near future, we'll be able to announce the groundbreaking for a location of Volunteer State Community College here in Wilson County. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Faulkner. Need a motion on that resolution?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time now, we will have special recognition by Ms. Sonia Robinson.
If there's anybody in the audience back there that has been a part of Steve for all these years, if you would stand up and be recognized, I'd appreciate that very much. Thank you. I could stand up here for a good while and talk about Steve Lynch. And when I started and was asked and came to the Road Commission, my start date was Steve's birthday. Now, I don't think that's probably the greatest birthday present he ever received. But it was a wonderful day, and when I got asked to read this resolution, it's an honor and a privilege to me because I worked with Steve for 20 years and have been on the board for three, and I can't say enough about it and about this wonderful man that done such a wonderful job with the people at this Road Commission. I asked a bunch of the guys at work, I called them, and asked them what they thought about him, and I couldn't write them all down because they all basically said the same thing. And one of them said he's one of the most honest men I've ever known. A former commissioner said he's a good, good man, and he said he's always helped the people. If he could help them, he helped them. One of them said he's the most fair man I have ever worked for. But of all of them, they all said the same thing, but one of them stuck out because it basically said the same thing that all of them had said, and it was, he always gave us the means to do our job without ever looking over our shoulders to carry it out. He always gave you an honest answer when you ask him a question. And I've got to say, he honestly did. Now, you may not have liked it, but he was an honest man. So it's an honor for me, Steve, to read this. Resolution of the Road Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring Steve Lynch for his years of service to the Wilson County Road Commission. Whereas Mr. Steve Lynch is a lifetime resident of Wilson County, he was raised in the Lagarto Community and attended Mount Juliet High School. And whereas, joined in marriage to Ms. Barbara on October 17th, 1980, together the two started a beautiful family, complete with daughters Stephanie and Jennifer, son Johnny, and grandchildren Stephen Michael, Nathaniel, Paisley, Angel, and Cameron. And whereas Steve began his career with the Wilson County Road Commission on April 6th, 1987, and became a jack-of-all-trades within the department. He started as an equipment operator. Six years later, on July 6th of 1993, he began duties as administrative assistant. Steve served as interim road superintendent from September 23rd, 1994, to October 24th, 1994, and again January 12th, 2015, after the passing of Mr. Steve Armstead. He was also assistant superintendent in October of 1994. Whereas while he has worn many hats within the Wilson County Road Department, one thing has remained the same: Steve's willingness to go above and beyond, working in any capacity needed. Steve is well-respected among his coworkers and has always been an outstanding employee. Whereas after 33 years of dedicated service to Wilson County and its citizens, Steve will be retiring from the Wilson County Road Commission. He is looking forward to his retirement and the opportunity to relax and do the things he enjoys most. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Wilson County Road Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor Steve Lynch for his dedicated service, years of service, to the Wilson County Road Department, its employees, and Wilson County citizens. We wish him well as he begins his next chapter of life, given under our hands this 21st day of December, 2020. I ask that this be received.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess it's my turn now. But the thing I always told the road board, it wasn't Steve Lynch is the God I serve. When I had troubles and needed an answer, I prayed, and the Lord would put something in my mind, it'd work every time. And that's all I can tell you, and I had some good mentors from day one to the last day. The road board's always been good to me, and we've always had a good road board. We never had a bad one since I've been there. And they've always took up for the Road Commission. If they didn't, I'd gouge them a little. I figured the guy's done all the work, and they deserve the glory, not Steve Lynch. They're the ones that was out there on the road. I was out there from time to time. And my little wife Barbara, she needs recognition because no telling how many times at night she's been woke up. And I mean, in one night, maybe five, six times, the phone ringing, which that was fine, that was my job. But now, it wasn't her job, and whenever it was snowing or something, time to time, I'd tell her, "Let's go take a ride." And she'd jump in that vehicle, just like it was her job, which it wasn't, but she would ride with me, and she's been out there with Steve. He's been there almost 30 years and worked with me, and he's a good man. But she's been out there when he's cutting trees. We sat there on Peyton Road, went out four hours, and Barbara was about to have a calf and go home. But we got it done, and like I said, we always had pretty good commissioners. Some of them I didn't like, I'll be honest. But if you ask me, the ones up here now, they doing a good job, and I appreciate everything they done for me. And even the ones I didn't like, we got along. I mean, if they needed something, I done it because that was my job, and I just appreciate all y'all's compliments and thank you.
I will say this about Mr. Lynch. We had every Road Commission meeting, we would have a prayer, and guarantee you, we're going to call on Steve Lynch to say the prayer because you knew he was getting through and with the way that he talked to the Lord, and I will go back and say this for him too. Financially, we're sound at the Road Commission. Steve Lynch had a lot to do with that. He took care of business, and like he said a while ago, he likes, he might not like me either, but there's some, you know, he just told it like it was, and that made for a good leader and a good businessman, and I appreciate you and thank you for what you've always done, and you've been there, you know, at times that we battled with different things, and so thank you for doing that. We appreciate you. We hate to see you go, but we said it's time for you to enjoy retirement, and we understand that. Thank you. If all my people that are joining me via video here, if you would mute your mics, that would help me. And at this time, I would like to call on Commissioner Dow and Commissioner Glover.
And also, we have, again, Lebanon High School, came home with a championship. So all Mount Juliet folks, sorry about that, but we got it. If the team members for Aiden, will y'all stand for a second? Family, his mom and dad are here also. And Coach? Coach Ingles? This is part of, there's a whole lot more team members here because of COVID, and their parents probably not letting them come out. I'm sure they're supporting you because I know everybody loves you on the team. But going to go do a resolution? Y'all may sit down. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring Aiden Britt for a successful career in cross-country. Aiden Britt is a senior at Lebanon High School, scheduled to graduate with the class of 2021. During his time at Lebanon High School, he distinguished himself in the athletic event of cross-country, winning the Tennessee High School State Championship in 2020, and he has competed in the High School State Championship all four years, winning 12th as a freshman, 6th as a sophomore, 5th as a junior, and winning it all this year as a senior. He's received many accolades, including several from the Mid-State Cross-Country Association, three times being named to the All Mid-State First Team, and finishing number one in 2019. He has made the Tennessee All Mid-State Runner of the Year three consecutive years, finished second team as a freshman, first team, top three as a sophomore, first team, top three as a junior, with years award set to be announced in May. Aiden has not limited his competition to the state of Tennessee, competing in the Southern and Southern Midwest regional invitations, finishing his high school, finishing as high as second in the Southern. Aiden currently holds a 5K course record at Macon County, and recently, he clocked a personal record of nine minutes, eight seconds to win the Memphis Fall Classic, the 3,200 meters, which is two miles. That's pretty fast. In Memphis, besting a star-studded field of 36 prep runners at Christian Brothers High School, that according to athleticnet.com, his time there placed him in the top 20 of all high school runners in the country this year at the 3,200-meter distance. The list awards does not include the numerous weekly meet titles he had won in his distinguished career, and while competing for Lebanon High School, he has represented and shown Wilson County in a positive light, not just here, but in the state of Tennessee and in all other states he had competed in. And he continues to be a positive influence, own and the road model for all the younger people that's on the team and also at the high school. During his career, he has been coached by Mark Ingles and J.D. Lakeman. Aiden's accomplishments are a process of time and hard work, being very goal-oriented, setting his mind on his goal, taking ownership of it, and doing what is necessary to be successful. And before I finish this part, Dr. Wright, what else did you say? That is very impressive. Man, I'm getting ready to say that. And the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, we hereby recognize Lebanon High School Senior Aiden Britt for his many accomplishments in the field of cross-country and offer our support and encouragement to him as he prepares to enroll upon graduation at the University of Mississippi to compete at the collegiate level. Given this at our hands this 21st day of December, 2020, make a motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
I just want to start by saying thank you to everybody here for this honor. It really means a lot to have the support of the community behind me. Really got to say thank you to my coaches, especially Ingles, but also Coach Lakeman and Coach Hannah, who I've had in high school. They've definitely been behind me this whole time, and they're a big part of why I've succeeded. Same with my parents and Ms. Melody always being there to help with the meets and organizing with the team, and all my teammates being there for me. Just really proud to represent the city and Lebanon High School and just this area, and having the community behind me definitely means a lot, so I really appreciate it.
Hooker's Cross Road.
Everybody's laying claim.
Thank y'all for coming.
Appreciate the teammates being here and the parents. Thank you. Coach Ingles, it's an honor to see you as well. Mr. Britt, thanks for putting Wilson County on the map. Thank you for that. This time, we will have the report from the Minutes Committee. Commissioner Bishop?
The Minutes Committee met at 6 o'clock Thursday, December the 10th, in the Commission Room with four members present. The minutes were approved that were in your packet. I make a motion for this report to be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have the reading of the minutes.
Make a motion. We dispense with the reading of the minutes.
I got several of that from our computer as well as from the audience. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So they're all stirred up. I got a note that was put on my desk that said that we had someone here that is an expert on social distancing and wanted to speak tonight during my time, so I can do that at the beginning, whoever that is.
Thirty-two years. You couldn't find anything else to do.
That's exactly right.
Congratulations, by the way, 32 years of service to Lebanon High School, I mean Lebanon.
Heard enough of that.
Yeah, I got you.
As most of you know, I'm an expert in my field, social distancing. Pay attention. Chad Bernard, old Winter Wonderland Chad, social distancing doesn't take place over there, and just glad to see he didn't show up today. Thanks for giving me a little space. You okay, Buckeye Wendell?
Yes, sir.
Got it figured out. So I'm here to talk about social distancing. I've been asked by the mayor, as an expert in my field, to come and speak to you about this subject. Made a few recommendations to him. Don't know if he'll take them up. Basically, one recommendation is to change the standard practice of six feet to 60 feet. I believe people in Franklin's district can understand the need for that. Also, been asked to...
What's that, Ash?
I'm sorry, whoever's listening, we have no sound in the remote world.
Kevin, I wouldn't choose your feet.
Don't know which house he's at.
Opera-ty, that's a problem. All right, so I'm going to wrap this up real quick. Basically, what I'd ask you to do is if you get a holiday invitation, treat it like the Road Commission does on a Friday and just skip it altogether. Anybody at home, and some that can't hear it, if anybody's looking for a gift idea for any of these squires, I hear they enjoy some flip-flops from time to time. That might be a good gift idea. And if anybody has any questions, I will take them now. None seen.
Question, question.
Well, okay. I'll move on. Rick Martin has been appointed to the Gas Utility District to replace the late Mr. John Johnson. No action is needed from this body. It has just appeared, has just appeared in the minutes. Also, normally at this time of the year, we would appoint a member to the Ag Extension Committee, but with the appointment of the director still pending, those committee persons' positions, appointments will be deferred until January. Seeing that, we're ready to move forward. Mr., any notaries to be added to the list?
No, sir.
None from Ms. Doughty? Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? You're also to... You also are to appoint or to confirm my appointment of one member to serve a one-year term on the J E C D Board in position 19. Upon your confirmation, I would like to appoint Mr. Caleb Thorne. Information about Mr. Thorne was in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. And any opposed?
Aye.
Report for the Emergency Management Committee with joint with Public Works there, so I'll go to Commissioner Glover.
We met on Monday, December 7th, in a joint meeting at 5:00 PM. Move the minutes to be received and filed.
I got a motion to here, second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Emergency Management Department, Director Cooper, please. Speak into the mic. That will help me out there for them to hear.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commission. As far as our report, call volume for this month is pretty much running normal for this time of year. Just to let you know, we are reaching a critical state with available personnel due to the virus. We do have contingency plans in place if they are needed. Currently, they have not been needed much up to this point, but if we get any more cases, then we will be reaching that critical point. Also, I have a paramedic firefighter that had an incident at home. He is in critical condition at a Nashville hospital, so if you will, keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, if you will. As you know, the Wilson County COVID... As you know, the Wilson County COVID Task Force right now is meeting once a week. We are meeting on individual circumstances with communications pretty much daily with all of our partners. As you know, actively right now is the mask mandate, along with Governor Lee's executive order seventy that come out yesterday. As far as our numbers, our negative cases, and this is from this morning, were seventy-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten with ten thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine positive cases and a hundred-and-seventy-three of those new cases from Sunday. Recovered was nine thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four. Active cases are one thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three, which is a magnificent increase. Total hospitalized that we've had in Wilson County is two-hundred-and-two, and total deaths is a hundred-and-twelve, which is a hundred-and-twelve too many. Our fourteen-day average is right at a hundred percent, and our seven-day average for positive cases was twenty-three-point-five. And I guess I don't have to say both of those are extremely large in percentages. As far as our vaccine, it did not arrive today, but we are expecting our shipment tomorrow. We do have a point of distribution located and confirmed by the Department of Health, which will be enacted starting Wednesday. We do have particular times and dates, but we're not going to release those at this time for security reasons. But that will begin this week. That concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions, Director Cooper? Here a motion to approve report?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Just to add to this, and you probably already know, but in case you get asked by constituents, they are testing at the Ag Center Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine to one. On Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, they'll be there as well handing out self-test kits. They'll explain it to you, you must be eighteen years of age, you must have an email, and you must have a smart device to be able to do that. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, the regular group, as Director Cooper talked about, is that we'll be at an off-site area administering the vaccines. And the vaccines, probably the easiest way in my mind that they've asked us to try to get this information out goes out. Phase one really is going to go out. The first phase that came in from Pfizer was out to twenty-eight different locations, which is seventy-four hospitals. That was a large hospitals with fourteen-hundred employees or better. That got here last week. We had the first vaccination here on last Friday at seven A.M. at the hospital with the first one to be vaccinated. But that first group is going to go to people that take care of people, is the easiest way for me to tell you that. The second group of people that's going to get it are the people that are adults that have two or more of the underlying conditions. The third group of people is going to be your critical infrastructure people, which is like your teachers and that particular area, and then your fourth group is everybody else. They have been very methodical at how they plan this. For example, the hospital, they did a survey and said, hey, look, here's what, how many people over there will take it? So they didn't send any more over there than the people that decided to take it. Same thing with Director Cooper, which is working close with the health department. When we start doing first responders, he surveyed his people, so there won't be any waste. The Pfizer vaccine has a twenty-day, a twenty-one-day cycle in that you got to take it twenty-one days after you take it the first time, and the Moderna has a twenty-eight-day cycle, and that's the one that we're waiting on now that will be here possibly Wednesday. But we're going to try to continue to give you information. We're only going to send you one thing a day because we don't want to flood it to you, but we've got some frequently asked questions and those things. That way you have as much information as you need. If you need anything else, you call me and we'll try to get it. But we've been asked quite a bit, well, when will I get it? Or how will I know where to go? So that will be coming out. All this is being done by the county health department. That's who's in charge of that on our side, closely working with the WEMA organization. Any questions on the vaccine? Yes, sir.
Will they be distributed also to C V S or Walgreens or like that?
That will happen at some point down the line. They'll first of all take care of medical personnel first, as we said in those-
Right, I agree.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to take care of those people first.
Yes, sir.
That will get there.
Yes, sir, they will. Yes, sir. We're doing a lot to try to get, you know, from our side, we've looked at it really in three different phases here. One's prevention, the other one is recovery, and the last one is the vaccine rollout or information. So we're putting a lot of stuff out there to try to educate people to be as safe as they can from our office, so we're doing, as far as I know, everything. If you have other suggestions, though, please let us know, okay? Okay. I'll move on now with the report from the law enforcement committee, which is also a joint committee with Commissioner Weathers' Public Works Group. I'll go to Commissioner Rich for that.
Yes, Chairman. The had a joint meeting of law enforcement and public works on November the thirtieth. Criminal justice center, the minutes are in your packet, make a motion. See them filed.
I got a motion, I heard a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. The sheriff report, Sheriff Bryan.
County Commissioners, your reports in your packet. The numbers are pretty much on par for December, November of last year each year, and calls for services down a little bit because mainly because it's that time of year. A couple of numbers that are sticking up, sticking, that continue to rise, and this Corona hasn't slowed it down, is the number of warrants that's been issued, the number of civil process that's been issued. That has not slowed down, and I really don't understand why, but it hasn't. So we've got a lot of people that's having some civil issues that we're having to deal with even through these hard times, so we're continuing to work through that. The, I think Steve left, yeah, he left. I want to congratulate him. I'm going to tell you something about Steve. Every time you called him, he'd give you an answer. And like I said, he may not like it, but he'll give you an answer. And it's fine, that's, he'll tell you the truth, and I just want everybody, every commissioner in here and the ones over here, and I like every one of you. Like every one of you. Well, Chris, how many years? Thirty-two?
Same as you.
Same as me. So don't, you got nothing on me. The, we continued work with WEMA, Director Cooper on this vaccination. Big part of that, they're working very hard getting the medical people, the first responders vaccinated. That's important. He talked about critical staffing problems because of COVID. We're having, we're having employees get this, and I would ask that you keep them in your prayers and that everything works out, and some rough stuff now, okay? But we, we're at a level, we're keeping it covered, so we've got a plan in case any employees, if we get shorthanded or something, so we'll be working towards that. A big part of this vaccination thing is security. We'll be securing all the, all the distribution areas, the health departments, different things like that, so we're working with them hand in hand, and they're doing a great job in that. I want to talk about this Grinch guy, whoever he was. Annette, if you'll just vote for this jail, I'll have a place for him in that jail, okay? That concludes my report.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion from anybody? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you.
This time, Commissioner Stafford, if you would unmute, I will let you talk me through the education committee.
Met on Thursday, December the tenth, five-thirty, in the upstairs meeting room. I move these minutes be received and filed. There are no questions.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? This time, Director-
Aye.
If you will go back and thank you and mute, and we'll go now to Dr. Wright.
Commissioners, you have the report in your packet. I'm just going to touch on some positive things tonight. Thank you. When we had a recognized Dr. Faulkner tonight in the fifty-year anniversary, just as a note, we have six-hundred-and-eighty students right now that are in dual enrollment classes. That's with Vols State and Cumberland, with the majority at Vols State. And what that means, that you have students that have the ability that will exit with their high school diploma with anywhere from two to four college credits. And we also will have students that will come out with an associate's degree at the same time they graduate high school. And so when you look at what some of the Hope Scholarship money and how that's being used, it's a tremendous advantage, not only for our students, but also for the parents, because what you're seeing is students that either go on to TCAT, go into a two-year university or going on to four-year. When you look at the completion rate, it's a much higher rate than those students that get on the five- and six-year plan when they go on to college, which I don't know if you've ever had any of your own youngsters that might have, because I did. So just a point there. Aiden Britt that we recognized tonight, oh, a tremendous athlete, but as the point that, and thank you, Commissioner Glover, for asking, he is part of that one million scholars across the country that are recognized through national merit, and he is in the top one percent. So when you think that out of a million, he's at the top of the top, and he's a commended finalist on that, so need to note that as well. Our seniors this year have hit a historical high on their ACT score at a twenty-one-point-five. Over fifty-three percent of our seniors achieved a twenty-one or better, which is the goal. And when you look at the number of students in the last two years that have moved above a twenty-five, which that's more dollars in the bank when they go on to college, so and that, that score was right in the midst of the pandemic. So our kids are really, really working hard and they're hitting, they're hitting the mark, and we're so pleased. When you look at a statewide comparison, and you know, I always like to put that out there, there's a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-forty-five school districts, but only a hundred-and-twenty-seven have high schools, and we are ranking twelfth out of the hundred-and-twenty-seven public school districts with the highest average composite among the class of two thousand and twenty. So I want to recognize that. We also want to recognize W.A. Wright Elementary School. They're recognized as one of up to a hundred schools that are Title I schools across the country to receive the National ESEA Distinguished School Award for Exceptional Student Performance and Academic Growth for two or more consecutive years. And usually that, when you look at Title I schools, that's based on economic disparities within a school, and they have been in the top five percent in the state in achievement and growth for the last four to five years. But in the two years, when you look at national recognition, they're in the top one hundred in the country, and there was one other school in Tennessee, it was Eaton's Crossroads out of Loudoun County, I believe, that was the other one that was recognized as well. And then, I also made note that Mickey Hall, our deputy director, announced his retirement and will be effective December thirty-first. It's after twenty-eight distinguished years with Wilson County Schools, and with the timing, as far as in the midst of COVID and everything, we will try to do a very timely recognition, maybe after the first of the year, but don't want that to go unnoticed. And even though I said keep it as positive, COVID right now is really making an impact on the school district. While we were most concerned, and always concerned, about our staff and the impact there, we're now, now seeing it hit our students at an alarming rate, and last week, we lost a parent that had a three-week bout with COVID. So it's one that, for anyone to say that they're still not seeing the impact, we're seeing it and we're feeling that. And with that, I want to wish this body a very blessed Christmas and looking forward, I am looking forward to two thousand and twenty-one, and with health, much happiness, and also prosperity for all. And with that concludes my report for this evening.
Motion. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. And I got you, I'll get you one second. Commissioner Glover?
Dr. Wright, I want to go on the record and say I hope you sit there and think long and hard and stay with us a little longer than May or whatever you're planning on it. We would love to keep you there. I know I would love you to stay.
Thank you, Commissioner Glover. Appreciate what you know, and I'll tell you what, this has been seven of the most glorious years I've had out of nearly a forty-year career, but for the record, I just turned sixty-eight.
Got a lot of good years left.
And I'm feeling it. For the record, so.
Commissioner Jenrick?
I have a couple of questions. You said the score of twenty-five and above was the highest. How many, what percentage was that? Can you tell us?
I don't know off the top of my head, but that, the thing is, the twenty-one is the benchmark, so we're above that. So when you look at the composite average that we've seen as students that have moved every point above a twenty-one, it talks about sustainability in college. The twenty-five starts getting into the extra dollars, and I, I'll bring you a percentage next time, and then twenty-seven, we've also seen a bump there between twenty-seven and thirty, and you're, you're getting into some presidential money there, which is a full ride plus spending money in a state school.
Right, another one, just an update on the schools in Mount Juliet, the insurance, whatever's going on with our schools.
Well, as much as the, the answer or the response I gave you when we met with budget and education, I wish I could give you more detailed information. We're still in negotiation, and, and Mr. Jennings is acting as the attorney with that, and he is talking to both NFA, which is the National Fire Adjusters, and Travelers Insurance, so I wish I could give you more information, but we're still negotiating.
Right, thank you.
We're pushing that pretty hard, John. That needs to go away.
Yeah, we need, we need to move on.
And I thank you for that.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright. All of my people at home, if you will, you can unmute now as we go through the committee reports, and that way you can answer. Aye, and you can also answer nay if you choose to do so. I would remind everyone this, that you have the rules booklet with you tonight, if you'll just sign it, that you've gone through it and made any corrections and leave it in your, in your desk would be great, we'll come by and pick it up, but we're trying to get those back so we can get those printed with any corrections that you found and get that done in a timely manner. Sheriff Bryan, if you would, did not see Commissioner Marlowe before you leave about the issue we talked about today, Commissioner Marlowe, and I have, I have this right here, if you would, so we can talk about that just before you leave. At this time, we will go Ag Center Management Committee, Commissioner Scruggs?
I'm sorry?
First page, last thing.
My bad. It's Ms. Weathers. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers, my bad.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee met December the seventh with the Emergency Management Committee. The minutes were in your packet. May they be received and filed, please?
Got a motion and a second for both of those. Sorry that I missed it, I just kind of wrote over it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I didn't even want to believe it when y'all told me, which is normal for me. Ag Center Management Committee, Commissioner Scruggs?
Ag Center Management Committee met on December nineteenth. It's in your packet, received and filed.
Second. I got a motion on the Ag Center Management, I got a second. Any discussion from anybody? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, we got them all. Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
Animal Control met Thursday, December the tenth, five o'clock, courthouse. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
I got a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? My people at home, if you could, help me by just, if you want to talk, raise your hand, would be good, that way I know to recognize if you have something that you need to say. And you can also unmute if you want to do that at this time. Audit, Commissioner Bernard? Got no report from Commissioner Bernard. Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker?
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanatta?
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
No report. Finance, Commissioner Weathers?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
Insurance, no report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
Judicial met on November twenty-third at four-thirty P.M. Also December seventh at four forty-five P.M. Move that these minutes be received and filed.
Second. I got a motion and a second. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
No report. Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
Rules Committee met on the 10th of December. The minutes are in your package. I move that they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion?
They're not in there.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs?
Urban Type Facility Board met December 4th. In your packet.
I got a motion and a second. I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where they are.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Finance Director Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard?
If you will, my people at home, if you'll go ahead and mute your mics, and then when we get time for discussion, if you have questions for Mr. Maynard, I will turn you back around and let you ask questions. Commissioner Stafford, could you mute, please? Thank you.
Tell someone here to pass them across. All the way across.
Thank you, sir.
So if you have questions at home, all I ask you to do is unmute and then speak, and the rest of you stay muted. Thank you.
All the way across.
It's not politically correct to say I'm tired of masks, but I am tired of masks, but I do wear one. I've had a lot of conversation with a lot of different people this week about fund balance and what does it mean. And I wanted to take a few minutes and clear that up as best I can, because a lot of people think fund balance means cash at any given point in time, and that is not what fund balance means. Okay? Basically, this is a page right out of the budget book, and it starts with your estimated beginning fund balance. If y'all remember, we passed a budget before June 30th this year, so those were not final numbers for the first time ever. They were estimated numbers, so they had to go back and be adjusted to actual. And have still have not been adjusted to audit, because the audit report has not been released. Then we estimate our revenue and other sources, and our expenditures and other uses to come up with an estimating ending fund balance of June 30th of 2021. That, when I say fund balance, is what I'm referring to, is based on our projections, what we think fund balance will be at the end of the year. Okay? So, for example, we had a lot of conversations, this document reflects in capital projects and ending fund balance of a little over $7 million. At the end of November, there was actually 5.6 million in cash. So this does not mean that this is how much cash we have. Likewise, in the general fund, 10 million, and at the end of November, we may have a little less than 10 million. By the, by the time December and February roll around, we'll have 30 million. Okay? And then it'll start declining again from there. So I just don't want people to have this direct correlation between fund balance and cash, that just because fund balance says something, that cash is either this low or this high, there is not a direct correlation. And it is based on the projection of, and we are watching, that's part of my job, is to watch the projections that we make, you know, that's what your summary financial report in here is, to watch the projections that we're making, to see how we're coming in with comparison of how we, we estimated. So I just felt like that needed to be cleared up a little bit, and that's really all I want to talk about tonight. Everything from a finance report looks really where we would expect it to be at this point in the year. So unless you have any questions for me?
So, for example, if we get a report from you this month, and it says the capital projects is 7 million, that's not for this month? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. Exactly.
It's not for this month, it's projected for the end of the year.
Projected for the end of the year, yes, sir. Projected for the, and it does not necessarily mean, again, that's how much cash you have to do.
Right, I understand. I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Patton?
And that's same kind of thing I was going to ask you. So if I call you and say, Aaron, how much is in fund balance? Or how much is in capital projects? You're going to give me an estimate at, to the end of the fiscal year? You're not going to give me the actual amount?
I would give you the estimate at the end of the year, because that's what we use. For example, I'm going to use the one that everybody picks on. So if you look at the General Purpose School Fund, their actual fund balance was 9.4 million. They estimated revenues of 156 million, expenditures of 160, and estimated ending of 5.2. Let's call it 5.3. If you called me and said, what's fund balance in the school system, I would say 5.3. Because if I told you it was nine, you might go in the red, which is not legal.
Commissioner Brees?
And that's with not only estimated revenues, but that also takes into account what is currently budgeted for expenses, right?
Correct.
So if we add additional expenses, obviously this number is going to be very different.
This number changes. And I'm looking at some software, I hope you guys will come to the next budget meeting. I hope those of you on the Budget Committee will take a serious look at it and approve it. I'm looking at some software that would update the budget document real-time on the website. It would not be, by the time this document gets published and is put on the website, it's already out of date. This budget has already been amended. It would also, I think, greatly ease the adoption, the budget adoption process, it would eliminate errors in spreadsheets, it would do a number of different things, and I think it's pretty reasonably cost for what it would do. But again, that's your decision. But I've talked to them, and they, they believe they can have us up and running by the beginning of our budget calendar, which would be February 1st.
I think that would be wonderful.
And I want to say, because I did pick on them, when you look at that school system budget, number one, many years, they do go into the red, okay? Not every year do they project going into the red and wind up into black. And number two, it's no different than what we did up until about three or four years ago. We projected every single year going into the red, and when it came down to the end of the year, most years we wound up in the black. And thanks to the mayor, and hopefully me, and some people who served on this body at the time, we said, you know what, we want to approach this in a different fashion. And so what we tried to do is come as close to budgeting and break even as possible. This year, we, we budgeted a $1.5 million loss, because it's COVID. We didn't, we didn't know. But we are trying as best we can to budget on a break even basis in the general fund. So, again, that was not meant to be a criticism of the school board's budget in any way. I just know that's, I get asked about that one a lot, you know, and it going in the red. So it was the easiest one to demonstrate, you know, why we use that estimated ending fund balance.
Do I have any other questions for Mr. Maynard? Anybody at home have any questions? You can unmute and ask at this time.
Mr. Chairman, Jerry McFarland got a question for Aaron there. So on the fund balance document, in your budget document, you have, the last column says changes, and there's nothing in the changes except on a drug court. Can you not change that column to actual, put actual numbers, up-to-date numbers in there, so we'll have an idea which way revenues are flowing, expenditures are going, et cetera?
You have that, sir, in your other report, in, in the, in the statement of revenues and expenditures, that the other finance report that you have, I think that is the more appropriate place to look, in, in my opinion.
They don't jive with each other, though, Aaron.
I'm, they don't jive? Yeah.
They're two sets of numbers. We ought to have it all consolidated, shouldn't we?
Well, if we were going to start with fund balance from June 30th of 2020, and we were going to build and give you a different fund balance number each and every month, then yes. But in my mind, no, but that's a, that's a further conversation that we can have. In my mind, I don't need to give you a new fund balance number every single month, because it would change.
Well, sure will change, that's right, but we need to be working, thinking with real numbers, and not what we're going to expect at the end of this FY.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a, of a reasonable way to respond to that, Jerry, and right now I can't, so we'll talk about it.
The best way, I mean, you talk tomorrow in the phone, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk tomorrow.
Right of that, thanks.
Commissioner Walker?
Quick question. The estimated beginning fund balance, is this from the budget book, or is this adjusted numbers?
No, this is from the budget book. That was the easiest way I could think of to illustrate the point. Any other questions for Commissioner Maynard? I mean, Mr. Maynard, excuse me? Anybody else online that would like to ask a question?
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask a question, please.
Go ahead.
I would like to know how, I would like to know how close are the AFT numbers? Are they actual, or they, so what is the, what is the AFT adequate facilities tax number?
Which part do you want to know? Do you want the revenues and expenditures, or fund balance, or which one do you want to know?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Um, which number do you want to know? If you look on page, uh, let's see, if you look on page eight of the summary financial statement?
Page eight of nine?
Yep. Page eight of nine.
In the 4285?
Yeah, you budgeted, we budgeted $3 million in adequate facilities development tax. You've received 1.3 million through the month of November. That is 43.61%. You are 41.67% through the fiscal year, so you're ahead of what you budgeted. You likewise, in building permits, you're at 49.97, and in water taps, you've already received almost, let's call it 200% of what you budgeted. So your budgeted revenues are more than on track. We did make the one amendment missing that you remember, 4.50 million, which was left out of the budget for that final payment on the Highland Heights property. So you've taken in a million 822, you've spent a million 438, so you've got a profit at this point in the year of $383,938. And you've got cash of 5.6 million. Probably as of today, it's closer to 5.7 or 5.8.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, just trying to keep close numbers on that, because I know we're supposed to be using that for special stuff, so I just want to make sure, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Any work? Anybody? Are you, all right? You got a motion?
Motion to approve his report.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Commissioner. This time, if you will, now you can go back to muting, and as we get to doing the roll call for each one, I will turn you over to Ms. Doughty, and she will let you answer to her at that time. So we're ready for financial reports done? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met Thursday, December the 10th, here at the County Commission Meeting Room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
We will now please mute your mic, and we will call on you individually to vote. You should be able to hear the resolution, and I will call on you and ask for your vote, and then when you say it out loud, Ms. Doughty will hear that. Mr. Marlowe? If you'll talk into the mic, Mr. Marlowe, where everybody can hear, that would help me.
Resolution 20-12-3 to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2021-05.
Motion to.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now we got discussion? Anybody? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Bernard? Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford? Please mute when you finish. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Costley? Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 yes, 0 no. Resolution passes. Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 20-12-4 to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation in the ambulance fund.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Costley? Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash? On the record, please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes. Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 20-12-5 to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make additional appropriations in the ambulance fund.
I move.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 20-12-6 to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation in the capital projects fund.
Motion approved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 yes, 0 no, resolution passes. Mr. Marlowe?
Resolution 20-12-7, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 43.5 million of general obligation bonds of Wilson County, Tennessee.
Motion approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Now any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh. Resolution passes. Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution twenty-dash-twelve-dash-eight, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-three-point-five million dollars, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of bonds, establishing the terms and the disposition of proceeds, providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal or premium, if any, and interest on the bonds.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Stafford, I'm assuming these, this is McFarland, I'm assuming these are, are saving, changing interest rates, saving us some money. If that is correct, can somebody say how much? Correctly, whichever.
Yes, and that is the next one that's coming up, Commissioner McFarland. This one is, one of the, the first one you just got through, doing the forty-three-five, that was on the jail issuance obligation bond. This one is for the sale of the bond, so they're both the same. This is both to the jail. And then when we get to the next one, yes, Ashley McEnati is on here with us tonight, and so he could ask any questions you got. But just to go ahead while we're talking, these next two, you are lowering the interest rate, you're not extending the debt any, and you're not raising the debt any, and you're saving the taxpayers about four-point-five million dollars. But we'll get to that one in just one second. Do I hear any other questions on the one, resolution's twenty-dash-twelve-dash-eight? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes. Continue, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution twenty-dash-twelve-dash-nine, resolution authorizing the issuance of sale and payment of general obligation refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of approximately three, thirty million three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and providing for the levy of taxes for payment of debt service on the bonds.
I move.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now any questions concerning these refinancing? If you have that, we do have Ashley McEnati by video here, and can answer any of those. But as I said before, we're lowering the interest rate, not extending the debt term as far as the years, and not extending the amount of the debt and saving because we're going for like three-point-five percent interest down to one-point-seven-five or one-point-five, whatever the sale is. Any questions for Mr. McEnati or Mr. Maynard?
What is the savings layer?
Four-point-five million is projected for these two bonds together.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Commissioner Glover?
I just want to say thank you to you and Aaron for working hard to save the taxpayers four-and-a-half million dollars. Because that means a lot, because we have to make tough decisions concerning growth, and this just, this eases the burden just a hair.
Well, the credit goes to Mr. Maynard and to McEnati. They're the brains behind that organization. Anything else? Anybody?
Yes, sir, I'd like, yes, sir, I'd like to make a comment that, to realize this is projected, not actual. This is four-point-five million projected. And we'll probably get the actual later, correct? Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Are you ready to vote? Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-five and oh, resolution passes.
And the last one, twenty-dash-twelve-dash-ten, resolution authorizing the issuance of sale of payment of county district school refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of approximately forty-two million dollars, and providing for the levy and tax for the payment of debt service on the bonds.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion now on these?